Buenos días, todos. Este virtual hearing público del Comité de Transporte Aéreo, Parques, Turismo, educación superior y el avance de las mujeres, jóvenes y ciudadanos mayores se ha llamado a orden. Hoy es martes 20 de abril de 2021, y ahora la hora es nueve de la mañana. Para recordar y en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta, los avisos para este hearing fueron enviados el 13 de abril de 2021 y el 16 de abril de 2021. Además, este hearing fue notificado en el sitio web legislativo de Guam. Mi acompañante esta mañana para este hearing son la vicepresidenta Tina Munya Barnes, la patrocinadora de la legislación, el senador Mary Camacho Torres, el senador Tony Ada, el senador Pito Trelahi, el senador Cristo Wainius, el senador James Moylan, el senador Cello Tadequie, y gracias por acompañarnos. La presidenta Teresa M. Trelahi. También tenemos gente que ya ha firmado en la autoridad de la Casa de la Casa de Hospital de Guam Memorial y Ohala Adopciones. Buen día a todos, y gracias por acompañarnos. Antes de proceder a la discusión, me gustaría primero proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para todos los que están en la audiencia. La conducta de este hearing será la siguiente. Todos deben cumplir con las reglas de conducta y normas de garantía de calidad. Por favor, mantén el video en todo momento y asegúrate de que estés en una sala con pocas interrupciones y iluminación adecuada, específicamente para asegurarte de que tu cara esté visible en todo momento. Cuando esté hablando, asegúrate de que estés sin música y que estés hablando a través de tu micrófono. El presidente invitará a individuos que han firmado para testificar para empezar a hablar. Individuos testificantes serán reconocidos por el presidente y decirán su nombre y organización por motivos recordativos. El orden de cuestiones comenzará con el panel de senadores, y luego podemos volver para más preguntas si hay necesidad de una segunda vuelta. Las preguntas y testimonio hoy serán confinados a la sustancia o naturaleza de la agenda. La inferencia personal respecto al carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testificando no es permitido. Cualquier violación de este reglamento general de conducta resultará en la desaparición del salón de reunión. Ahora comenzaremos a discutir nuestros elementos de agenda. A la solicitud de la patrocinadora y dado que estos dos billones son bills compañeros de nuestro agenda, el comité considerará el testimonio de ambos billones simultáneamente. El número 108-36COR, presentado por el senador Mary Camacho Torres, vicepresidenta Tina Rose Munya Barnes, senador Amanda L. Shelton, senador Talina Cruz Nelson, senador José Pito Trelahi, senador Joe S. Augustine, senador Frank Blas Jr., senador James C. Moylan, senador V. Anthony Ada, y senador Christopher M. Duainius. Y acto para amendar, sección 1302, sección 1308, y sección 1310B1A de artículo 3, capítulo 1, título 26, reglas administrativas y regulaciones relativas a la streamlining de las políticas y procedimientos de adopción en Guam, y el número 109-36COR, presentado por el senador Mary Camacho Torres, vicepresidenta Tina Rose Munya Barnes, senador Amanda L. Shelton, senador Talina Cruz Nelson, senador José Pito Trelahi, senador Joe S. Augustine, senador Frank Blas Jr., senador James C. Moylan, y senador V. Anthony Ada, y senador Christopher M. Duainius. Y acto para amendar, sección 13502A de artículo 5, capítulo 13, título 9, código Guam anotado, relativo a expandir la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes para incluir a los proveedores de servicios 911, y para amender la sección 13505 de artículo 5, capítulo 3, título 19, código Guam anotado, relativo a la inclusión de las agencias de adopción en la cadena de custodia para niños retrasados bajo la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes, y para requerir la distribución de materiales adjuntos aquí a aquí como ejemplos A a D, y para requerir más la adopción y transmisión de una política y procedimiento escrito en concordancia con la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes. También me gustaría saludar a los que han acompañado a nosotros en la audiencia esta mañana desde hace unos minutos, la directora de DYA y CPS Melanie Brennan, Bethany Taylor de Harvest House, y Teresa Archangel de el Departamento de Salud Pública y Servicios Sociales. Buen día a todos. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos. En este momento, me gustaría invitar a la patrocinadora de los dos billones, los dos, el número 108 y el número 109, el senador Mary Camacho Torres, para dar sus declaraciones de abertura.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. El número 108 reconoce la importancia de proporcionar entornos de nutrición permanente para todos los niños, incluyendo encontrar familias seguras y amorosas a través de la adopción. Según el último reporte anual más reciente del juzgado, Guam ha visto un aumento constante de adopciones durante los últimos cinco años, con 47 casos cargados y completados en la Corte Superior de Guam en 2019. En ese mismo año, Guam ganó su primera y única agencia de adopción no lucrativa. Esto proporciona otro recurso para facilitar la colocación de los niños en una casa amada. El número 108 simplemente reconoce estas agencias e inserta en nuestras políticas y procedimientos. Bajo el lenguaje propuesto, una agencia de adopción independiente, licenciada de la ley de Guam, podría ubicar a un niño en una casa adoptiva, servir como un seguro y supervisar la colocación del niño, y actuar como representante en el comité de control de la adopción. Además, el número 109 también clarifica los requisitos relativos a la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes. Esto proporcionaría una línea de tiempo más eficiente en concordancia con la intención de las leyes de la seguridad de Guam, permitiendo que un niño retrasado sea directamente a una familia adoptiva aprobada. En este sentido, la medida funciona en tandem con el número 109, aunque pensamos que sería mejor presentarlo como un proyecto independiente en lugar de una adopción en adición al número 109. Quiero agradecer a Ohala Adopciones por traer estos cambios a la atención de mi y la presidencia de mi vicepresidente. Expeditar la adopción legal en Guam es el mejor interés de los niños en necesidad, y nuestras reglas y regulaciones deberían reflejar eso. Gracias. Y también, Madam Presidente, hago una declaración sobre el número 109, si esto es okay.
Sí, por favor, proceda.
Bien. Madam Presidente, en términos simples, el número 109 añade otra línea de vida para las madres en crisis, en que ayuda a aquellos bajo circunstancias extenuadoras. Mientras que la ley de Guam 34120, la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes, permite a las madres en desastre deshacerse de sus bebés a una ubicación de seguridad de la safe haven, el número 109 ayudaría a aquellos que no tengan los recursos o medios de transporte para deshacerse de su hijo. Sabemos que la demografía estándar de una persona que abandona un niño nacido es la de un adolescente, una madre bajo privacidad. Casos de abandonamiento de hijos también son frecuentes relacionados con depresión postpartum, problemas de salud mental, uso de sustancia, y embarazos resultantes de violo o abuso. En el momento de una crisis, este prejuicio puede compelir a una madre a descartar su niño o dejar al niño en una ubicación cercana insegura. Para este fin, aquellos bajo circunstancias extenuadoras podrían llamar al 911 y anónimamente deshacerse de un niño a proveedores de servicios médicos de emergencia para la recuperación, asegurando que los nacidos se mantengan fuera de la amenaza y traigan a una ubicación de safe haven inmediatamente. En este momento, siete jurisdicciones, incluidas Massachusetts, Louisiana, Michigan, New Hampshire, Vermont, y Iowa, permiten el desahucio a los respondientes de emergencia 911, y el estado de Indiana contempló esta expansión en sus sesiones recientes. Además, el número 109 amena la cadena de custodia para niños retrasados bajo la Acta de Atención de la Salud de los Nuestros Nuestros Infantes, permitiendo que una agencia de adopción identificada por los servicios protectivos del niño asuman la custodia física del nacido. Según el Bureau de Servicios Sociales y Administración, Guam tiene más de 250 niños en cuidado foster y menos de 50 familias de foster licenciadas. Bajo la actual ley, los niños están ubicados en la custodia foster hasta que se pueda organizar una colocación permanente, un proceso que puede involucrar múltiples posiciones. Ahora que Guam tiene servicios de adopción no lucrativos, insertar agencias de adopción en la cadena de custodia permitirá que los niños sean ubicados con familias preaprobadas, alentando el peso en nuestro sistema de cuidado foster ya estancado. Por último, Madam Presidente, el número 109 proporciona materiales adjuntos como ejemplos A a D para asegurar que el personal en las safe havens autorizadas esté preparado en el caso de que un niño se desahogue de su instalación. Esta lista de contención ya se contempló dentro de la ley de safe haven de 2018. Sin embargo, reconocemos que el personal en algunas instalaciones puede no estar completamente consciente de sus responsabilidades bajo la ley. Y para ayudar en este esfuerzo, hemos creado formas similares a otras estados de safe haven que pueden ser ubicadas en la letra de la Bolsa y distribuidas electrónicamente para que cada ubicación autorizada esté consciente de lo que hacer y tenga estos documentos en mano. Es una oportunidad para alguien que puede estar contemplando el desahucio para ver cuáles son sus derechos y qué va a pasar con su hijo. Tendréis algunos posibles amendamientos, Madam Presidente, que voy a mencionar ahora. Uno es autorizar a CPS a hacer cambios en las formas en la sección 3 para garantizar que esté en conformidad con la ley de Guam 34120, para proporcionar flexibilidad adicional. También estoy en recepción de testimonios de miembros de la comunidad que me han pedido que considero amendar el número para permitir que un padre en desastre cumpla la ley de safe haven. Y quiero ser claro que el número 109 y la ley de Guam 34120 no terminan los derechos de los padres biológicos. Los derechos de dueños de procesos de derecho de padres seguirán como han sido bajo la actual Acta de Atención de la Salud de Guam y la Acta de Protección del Niño de Guam. También estoy abierta a considerar, dependiendo del testimonio recibido hoy, un designado a cargo de la madre en ocasiones donde ella no puede desahuciar el niño por sí misma. Así que, en conclusión, solo quiero decir que el número 109 reconoce que las madres en desastre, especialmente durante estos tiempos de pandemia, deberían tener todas las opciones disponibles para asegurar que su bebé esté seguro y cuidado. Y con eso, espero la declaración esta mañana. Gracias, Madam Presidente.
Muchas gracias, senador Torres. Y disculpa si falté a mencionar que también tuvimos al senador Joanne Brown con nosotros esta mañana. Y también me gustaría saludar a Jen Nowta de Safe Haven Pregnancy Center, que ha acompañado a nosotros. Y voy en el orden en mi pantalla para el testimonio esta mañana. Me gustaría invitar a la señora Lori Boss de Ohala Adopciones para comenzar. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría mencionar de nuevo que recibiremos testimonio juntos para los dos, el número 108 y el número 109. Pero si te gustaría separar tus testimonios, o si los senadores quieren hacer preguntas separadamente en cada número, permitiré eso en el hearing de hoy. Por favor, adelante, señora Boss. Gracias.
Gracias. Buenos días, Madam Presidente, Madam Presidente y comité. Gracias por permitirme hablar hoy a cargo de Ohala Adopciones. Mi nombre es Lori Boss. Soy directora de Ohala Adopciones, y estoy aquí para dar testimonio en apoyo de los amendamientos propuestos en el número 108-36. Como introducción breve, Ohala Adopciones fue organizada como una agencia de adopción no lucrativa en septiembre de 2019. Mis colegas y yo vimos una necesidad para las mujeres del país para entender sus opciones y tener acceso a la counseling y la educación sobre la adopción y el cuidado. Los cambios propuestos hoy reconocen la presencia de agencias de adopción privada ahora en Guam que no estaban aquí cuando esta ley fue establecida. Creemos que estos amendamientos a la ley 108-36 aumentarán la protección de los niños de Guam y proporcionarán más opciones para la seguridad y permanencia de la colocación de adopción para niños y familias. Al preaprobar nuestra perspectiva de familias adoptivas, somos capaces de tener una opción inmediata para la colocación de niños directamente a una casa adoptiva segura y estable. Múltiples posiciones son un principal contribuyente de trauma para los niños en cuidado. Cualquier vez que se pueda evitar el cuidado foster y se hace una colocación permanente en lugar de eso, hay menos trauma para un niño. Esperamos ver estas políticas y procedimientos implementadas como estándar en nuestros hospitales y centros médicos para asegurar la transferencia segura de un niño retrasado de nacimiento directamente de una madre de nacimiento a una familia adoptiva. Gracias a ustedes por todo su trabajo duro en unir estos. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señora Boss. Ahora pasaré a la señora Lilian Posadas de GMHA.
Hola. Buen día. ¿Me escuchas? Creo que hay algo pasando bien con el sonido. De todos modos, no tengo un testimonio escrito, y no obtuve la oportunidad de prepararlo, pero ciertamente apoyo esta legislación propuesta, nuevamente en el interés de los niños y los nacidos que, ya sabes, son entregados por las madres que no están realmente preparadas para realmente apoyar y cuidar a estos nacidos o a estos niños. Definitivamente es una necesidad en nuestra comunidad apoyar cualquier programa o cualquier servicio que garantice la seguridad y el nutrición de estos niños. Así que estoy en apoyo de estos dos billones legislativos. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señora Posadas. Ahora, Kelly, la señora Kelly Larson de Ohala Adopciones.
Gracias. En realidad, Tracy Anderson va a tomar la siguiente sección para nuestra agencia.
Okay. Muchas gracias, señora Tracy Anderson.
Buen día. Madam Presidente, Madam Presidente y comité, estoy tan grata que pueden escuchar hoy nuestro testimonio. Mi nombre es Tracy Anderson. Soy directora de Ohala Adopciones. Estamos emocionadas y contentas por apoyar estos dos amendamientos a las leyes. Siento que directamente abordan la necesidad de las mujeres y los niños en crisis, especialmente en la Acta de Atención de la Salud de Guam en nuestro país. Extendiendo la Acta de Atención de la Salud de Guam para incluir a las agencias de adopción privada en la cadena de custodia, permitimos que los niños retrasados sean ubicados directamente en la custodia física de una agencia de adopción o en la colocación con una familia preaprobada directamente del hospital. Esto asegura que el niño no entra en el sistema de cuidado foster excesivamente arruinado, que es consistente con el protocolo deseado seguido en muchos otros estados y territorios. Igualmente, como en el número 108, esto minimiza el riesgo de múltiples posiciones. Implementación, formación y conciencia de la comunidad son clave para proporcionar la opción de desahucio anónimo. Este vital recurso puede ser el único control que una madre en crisis tiene sobre su situación y el futuro de su niño. Signos, anuncios de servicio público, campañas de conciencia y redes sociales pueden ser usados para enseñar sobre esta opción de seguridad. Mientras que los ejemplos contienen en esta proposición, proporcionan información necesaria con conciencia básica y a los personal de la seguridad de Guam, queremos traer a su atención la disponibilidad de un programa de formación a través de la Alianza Nacional de Safe Haven. La Alianza Nacional de Safe Haven es una organización no lucrativa que fue establecida en 2004 en Arizona, y su misión es prevenir el abandono infantil en todo el país proporcionando supervisión y apoyo a todos los estados y territorios. Se han convertido en expertos en la seguridad de safe haven, mientras que apoyan más de 4,000 madres con desahucio de safe haven. Utilizando su programa de formación puede ser virtual o en persona, y supervisaremos que el personal de todos los hospitales y instalaciones médicas esté entrenado igualmente en todo el país. Todo el mundo tiene el mismo conocimiento y puede compartir responsabilidades de manera correcta. Estamos muy encantadas por el impacto positivo que estos amendamientos a este número pueden traer a nuestro país, y estamos contentas de que nos escucharan y nos dieran nuestras ideas hoy. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señora Anderson. Ahora, en mi lista está Lonnie Brennan, la señora Lonnie Brennan del Departamento de Asuntos de Jovenes y CPS.
Buenos días. Buen día, senador Shelton, presidenta, vicepresidenta, todos los senadores, Ohala, Lilian. Buen día. Gracias por la oportunidad de proporcionar información para la consideración respecto a los dos, el número 108-36 y el número 109-36. Creo que la intención de ambos billones son noble, pero estoy obligada a compartir mis preocupaciones. Como directora del Departamento de Asuntos de Jovenes, he estado detallada con el Bureau de Servicios Sociales junto a un equipo de trabajadores sociales de DYA, retirados de CPS, y un trabajador social de Guam Behaverial Health para abordar un backlog de referencias CPS inadecuadas de la acusación de maltrato infantil en Guam. Hemos colaborado desde el 25 de enero de este año. Estar en esta posición me da la visión de las necesidades actuales de los servicios sociales que se relacionan con estos billones. Ambos billones insertan lenguaje, insertan agencias de adopción en el lenguaje de la ley estable ya existente y las reglas administrativas que gobernaban la adopción en Guam. Creo que demasiado ampliamente permite a cualquiera abrir una tienda aquí con una licencia de negocio sin primero poner en seguridad procedenciales o un proceso regulatorio para hacerlo. Incluso las instalaciones de cuidado infantil en Guam tienen un proceso de licencia. De hecho, el bureau es el que administra y asegura que cada instalación de cuidado infantil en Guam está licenciada. Así que, con solo con esas preocupaciones solas, me ha puesto en la posición en la que estoy en oposición a este número. Creo que necesitamos mirar más y clarificar. Y solo para explicar, en realidad hay 432 niños en diferentes tipos de cuidado foster. La mayoría de ellos, la mayoría de esos niños, resides en una ubicación relativa o de herencia. Y muchas veces creo que hay confusión respecto a, ya sabes, ese gran número siendo apto para la adopción. La parte realmente minuta de los niños que son adoptados aquí pasa por el comité de control de la adopción, que, nuevamente, las agencias de adopción se insertan en ese comité. Hay realmente, quiero decir que la última vez que el comité se encontró para un niño que fue puesto en adopción de esa manera fue en 2017. Y así, realmente, ya sabes, si la ley estaba intencionada para ayudarnos con las estudios, realmente son las estudios para niños en ubicación relativa, que si ellos van a adopción o, ya sabes, se consideran bajo un plan de permanencia, entonces eso sucederá. Y normalmente, esos son los que llevan tanto tiempo porque los padres hacen. La ley de Guam dicta que tratamos de mantener a las familias juntas, que eventualmente tratamos de reunirlas. Y así es por lo que hay esta confusión de que la adopción lleva tanto tiempo en Guam.
Muchas gracias, señora Brennan. Ahora pasaremos a Teresa Archangel del Departamento de Salud Pública y Servicios Sociales.
En realidad, quiero reiterar lo que dijo la señora Brennan. Creo que necesitamos hacer un estudio primero, y cuán efectivo es esta agencia de adopción, quién las regula, y qué está en place para asegurar que estamos proporcionando servicios de alta calidad, ya sabes, para ofrecer mayor eficiencia. Así que creo que lo que se necesita ahora, la razón por la que estamos en una situación crítica con respecto al Bureau de Servicios Sociales, es una financiación sostenible para apoyarlos. Ya sabes, actualmente, la Bolsa remite la responsabilidad de control de la custodia de los niños y niños y es responsable de la implementación de los procedimientos de adopción. Tienen licencia, pero con respecto a otra agencia cambiando las responsabilidades de un público a un privado, si realmente o una organización no lucrativa, si realmente hay una evaluación, examinar cómo, cuán efectivo, cuál es el resultado de los servicios que ofrecen. Solo tengo que proporcionar algunos comentarios. No tengo realmente esa conclusión. No, no, me gustaría oponerme porque actualmente el sistema está funcionando. Es solo que no tienen suficientes recursos para tener una mayor eficiencia en lo que respecta al trabajo.
Muchas gracias, señora Archangel. Ahora, en la lista sigue la señora Bethany Taylor de Harvest House.
Wow, eso es difícil de seguir. Pero gracias a todos por permitirme hablar a cargo de Harvest House y a cargo de ser una madre de foster en Guam durante mucho tiempo, 13 años. Así que, mi preocupación, en primer lugar, es que comenzando Harvest House en los últimos dos años, hemos tenido dos mujeres venir a nuestra organización, y no somos una agencia de adopción. En realidad, estamos para apoyar a los niños de foster en Guam, para apoyar la comunidad de foster en Guam, para apoyar a la familia biológica y para apoyar a los familiares también en los shelters que están tomando cuidado de nuestros niños de foster. Esa es nuestra misión y ese es nuestro objetivo. Así que cuando una madre viene a nosotros en necesidad de decir, quiero, no puedo cuidar de mi bebé, estoy embarazada, y realmente quiero poner a este bebé en adopción, espero que ese bebé no tenga que sufrir el sistema de cuidado foster porque el sistema de cuidado foster es una agencia hermosa que permite que nuestros bebés se reunan con su familia biológica algún día. Esa es nuestra esperanza. Aunque sea duro y horrible para nosotros, las madres de foster que tienen que sufrir ese duro despedida, esa es nuestra llamada, cuidar y darles una casa segura y amada por un tiempo pequeño hasta que su familia biológica pueda cambiar y la salud que necesitan para recuperar a sus hijos. No es una agencia que es para la mayoría de la adopción, aunque a veces lo que pasa es que nuestros niños de foster, las familias biológicas, sus derechos se terminan y nos permite que las madres de foster tengan el privilegio de adoptar los niños que hemos estado criando. Eso puede ser algo genial. También puede ser algo aterrador. Si no estamos realmente en ello para adoptar, realmente estábamos en ello para ayudar a una familia en Guam. Así que es un evento que cambia la vida incluso para un padre de foster a través de eso. Así que es una cosa hermosa, ¿ok? Pero quiero mencionar a las dos madres que han venido a nuestra agencia y han dicho, no puedo cuidar de mi bebé. Estoy a punto de dar nacimiento. No sé qué hacer. ¿Puedes ayudarme? Y afortunadamente, estábamos allí para ayudar, pero no somos una agencia de adopción. No era algo que estuviera entrenada para hacer. No es algo que conozco muy bien para hacer, pero fui capaz de ayudar a esas dos mamás. Yo, yo, solo desearía eso. Desearía ese camino de una agencia en lugar que tenga sus procedimientos y sus políticas en lugar. Entonces, para una mamá dar nacimiento en GMH y luego decir, no quiero mi bebé. Y luego ese niño está ubicado en el cuidado foster. Y nuevamente, lo que Ohala Adopciones estaba tratando de decir es que ningún niño debería pasar por tantas transiciones porque cada transición es un evento traumatizante. Los mejores, la mejor cosa que un niño puede tener es la relación de nutrición y una relación basada en confianza. Así que tan pronto formen esa relación basada en confianza como un niño, oh no. Eran mis hijos en la parte de atrás. Lo siento. Lo siento, soy una madre de foster. Así que solo quería decir cuán importante es tener esas relaciones basadas en confianza. Y cuando esa relación basada en confianza es sacada de ellos a tres meses o seis meses, y luego están ubicados en la adopción, se vuelve muy traumatizante de nuevo para que ese niño tenga que reformar otro vínculo. Así que solo quiero, quiero animar una agencia de adopción que tenga el pasión y deseo de ver esto venir para poder... to be able to allow a mama to be able to relinquish her rights or to have a safe place of relinquishing that baby and not have any news media that's blaspheming her and not have to have her baby go into foster care. I would rather that baby be placed in a nurturing environment right away from the very beginning of life and be given a forever home because permanency is very important for these children. And I wouldn't want to see any more children have to go through the foster care system that don't need to go through the foster care system. If the Safe Haven Law and the Safe Haven Act could help save some children and go to permanency, I support it. So I think it's a beautiful thing, though I want to support Bosa, and I want to support DYA and CPS, and I want to support different, I hope a roundtable is discussing the things that are lacking in the bill. So thank you for my time, for your time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. I think we also have Mayfe Miuco, who just joined us, if you'd like to give testimony from CPS. If you can unmute yourself.
Hafed, actually, this is Terry Uggan, the Department of Public Health.
I'm delighted. Familiar, I'm sorry.
I'm actually using Mayfe's phone, and so I'm like, oh, okay, Mayfe's going to testify. But thank you, guys, for this opportunity. And like Lillian over at GMH, I too did not prepare a speech or a presentation, but this is really an opportunity and one that we want to have a roundtable discussion about because the way these documents are written, we've got people sitting at the table sort of implanted, and I can understand the doing home studies. And like Lonnie mentioned earlier, our last one actually was in 2017. Now, there are situations where people do step up to the plate and say, you know, especially around our young moms that might be willing to give up a child, and very often, they do change their mind because we do infuse them into counseling. So I think it's really important that across the board, beginning with our foster parents, that they know of the different resources throughout public health and know where to refer people when they are approached. And I too, like Bethany, am a licensed foster parent, and it is an honor and a privilege. These children need all the love and wonderful support that they can possibly have. But I think what we're concerned about is, it feels a little bit like the cart has been put before the horse, that we're looking at an organization, perhaps well-intended, but Guam has a lot of concerns, I guess you could say, that most places do not have to have. That as a portal entry into the United States, you know, we have all of Asia behind us, the Philippines, Thailand, and so forth. And of course, we have to look at that bigger picture, everything from what it means to open our doors, to have different private adoption agencies actually come into the island, some perhaps with their own agenda. We have to worry about the human trafficking aspect of it. We have to consider really the bigger picture. And when we open our doors up to an array of different private adoption organizations, and then saying that we're going to, at some point, regulate or assist in licensing or certifying these people, we need to have a lengthy discussion as to what that even looks like. And then we've got, in this document, a team of people who are sort of embedded into the Adoption Selection Committee, which means that voting right, that determination as to which is the better family for this child. For me, when I read it, I don't know, I didn't get the feeling that it even had a cultural piece to it. So well-intended, but you know, there's a reason why Guam does not have an orphanage. There's a reason why that we don't have a number of things that we find in the mainland. We do always want to improve our supports. But at the same time, so often, adoptions are handled within families and very much often with the appreciation or with the blessing of the natural parent. And then also in this, we're looking at 48 hours of placement. We're turning over a child into this organization who's going to be, I guess, placing this child in some level of regulated or foster home setting, which is still a foster home, or it's still a home in which it's temporary until they actually place the child, 48 hours after the parental rights are relinquished. So there's a lot that we really need to go through here very carefully. It isn't something that we take lightly. Yes, are we appreciative of the offer to have supports and put things into place? Absolutely, there's always, always room for improvement. And as a foster parent, I know that, I realize that, I appreciate that. But at the same time, all I ask is that we tread very carefully, that we leave no stone unturned, that these are our children, and we want to make sure that things are done carefully. So I do appreciate this discussion, and I will be signing out. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Uggan. And thank you to everyone who has testified. I don't see anyone else on my list whose camera is on. But if I have missed you, please type it into the chat, and I will recognize you to give testimony. Now I'd like to open the floor for questions. If the sponsor of the bill would like to ask any questions of the panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brennan, you mentioned that this somehow opens up the possibility for, it'll enable anyone to set up shop on Guam, and you were referring to adoption agencies. How specifically does this bill and the two bills, one is the chain of allowing 911 service for Safe Haven and the chain of custody in Safe Haven, and the other making some minor amendments to the GARD Administrative Rules and Regulations, how specifically does that translate to that? I was a little confused by that direct application.
So currently, if I wanted to, or if my neighbor wanted to open up an adoption agency, what would he have to do? What, you know, by Guam law, could he do? Could he just, that's my question. Could he just go to Rev and Tax and decide, okay, I want to open up an adoption agency, and I'm going to work with someone in the Philippines or work with someone in China? That still has not been answered. And so that is a concern. And again, like the Deputy Director had mentioned, we are concerned about human trafficking. And so we just want to make sure that, I mean, if we're talking specifically about, you know, a reputable agency like Ohala, then that seems fine. And everyone's like, okay, you know, they know how to do home studies. They're aware of the Hague Convention, you know, they can help Guam, you know, but it doesn't leave it open. And that was one of the concerns that Terry and I had discussed yesterday alongside staff. And I know that Tess Archangel is aware of this. It is a huge concern.
I just want to point out, though, that any adoption agency that is duly licensed and set up in Guam will be licensed in accordance with Guam laws, number one. And number two, when we're talking about adoptions, isn't it true, just based on literature from the Guam Legal Services, for example, that there are two types of adoptions? There's local adoptions, and there are foreign adoptions. And the foreign adoptions also fall under all the parameters of the Hague Adoption Convention. And anything that has to do with foreign children being adopted by Guam residents will also be subject to not only the Hague Conventions, but also the INS regulations with regard to the children being relinquished over to Guam. So I believe that, you know, your concerns really are concerns that are apart from this bill and that the simple amendments in this bill to allow a chain of custody to an adoptive agency recognized by Bosa, it's very straightforward in the way that the bill is presented. But the other thing that I wanted to ask is that, as we're aware in Guam law, in order for adoption to move forward, the judge has to first terminate parental rights, right? There's one, they have to terminate parental rights in the court, that the child has to live with the adoptive family for up to a year, and that it's Bosa who conducts an extensive home study report for the courts. So that aspect of it will not change with any amendments to this bill, correct?
So our understanding was that, you know, the intent of Ohala was to come in and assist with those home studies. And that was the discussion that I had with. Mayfe Miuco is the current supervisor of HEPS. And that does not seem to change. So in terms of expediting home studies, when we're still going, when Child Protective Services is still going to do it, does not really assist us. And then that begs the question of, if we do that initial paperwork and we are setting the family up, or we're setting the child up to go into an adoption agency, if we are the ones that have taken that interim custody, who then is going to take care of the medical expenses? Who then, is the child under an adoption agency going to receive foster care payments in the interim until the adoption process is completed? These are questions that we still need answered. So again, just, I understand the intent of both bills. And I do like the fact that, you know, we have a reputable organization who can help us with international adoptions because we are not part, Guam is not part of the Hague Convention. So we do need assistance with those types of adoptions.
And those types of adoptions, we know are, they will, the jurisdiction of federal law and international policies will apply to that, that's no doubt. But, you know, I also wanted to point out that, that we're, you know, I understand what CPS deals with with regard to foster children and when these foster children in the foster care system become open to adoption, whether it is through relative adoptions or, and most likely, they are relative adoptions. But, you know, we also know that there is, within Guam laws, also the Safe Haven Act. And that's where a lot of what's contemplated in these bills also kicks in, where that chain of custody is minimized in the interest of the child. And this is where children are relinquished, parental rights are given up initially. So there, I know in some ways, we're meshing two different scenarios. We're meshing children in the foster care system who were removed for their safety and put into the guardianship of CPS. And then we're also dealing with children who are relinquished at birth or before, you know, upon birth. So they're two totally different things. But I also wanted to ask then, Ohala, anyone from Ohala, either Kelly, Tracy, or Leslie, or Kelly, Tracy, and Lonnie. Is with this bill, though, do you see a lot of the concerns with the idea of adoption agencies being able to come in and the likelihood of sex trafficking and child trafficking? Do you, I'm just, I'm curious about your take on those probable outcomes of this legislation. How does that, in your opinion, as an adoption agency, what do you think is the likelihood of that? Or just some opinion on that general concern? If someone can, Ohala can chime in?
I will, I'm Lori Boss. I will speak to a few of these. I'm sure Kelly and Tracy have many things to speak on also. First of all, we do not do international adoption. We have taken the Hague accredited training so that we understand exactly what that implies, what all the ramifications are. As was mentioned, for those of you who aren't really familiar with it, the Hague Convention is a multilateral treaty between countries that helps set guidelines and oversight and prevent the trafficking of children, especially in adoptions. But we don't take any part in that. Our main focus is Guam, to provide the children of Guam safe, permanent homes, and to provide the families of Guam with children if they would so desire them. CPS has all control here, as far as the Safe Haven bill goes. We've written that in there, Senator Torres' office has written in, that to be able to work with an agency that you have relinquished, for everyone to know, CPS technically takes legal custody of a child surrendered through the Safe Haven law. So at that point, to be able to give physical custody, we have to be on a list, or anyone that would have an agency here has to be on a list with CPS to be able to say, oh, yes. If we had three agencies on island, it would go from one agency, the next baby would go to the next agency, the next baby, and so on. So it isn't, if some people were earning money through their adoptions, we are not. We don't take a salary, we don't get paid, we are purely nonprofit, and we're trying to do everything for the cost of the court and legal fees for families on Guam. Most of you might be aware, affluent families are people that desperately want and save children. The average cost of adoption in the US is a little over $40,000. On Guam, thankfully, you can do an adoption for about $2,300 or less, just with court and legal fees. So that earning money is not our focus here. The other thing that we need to focus on is, is it possible that someone could start an agency if Guam laws allowed them to? Technically, I guess they could. Does CPS have to work with them? Absolutely not. And I think it's very important to see the one thing that Terry brought up about us serving, or anyone from an agency, serving as a representative on the Adoption Section Committee, when foster children are up for adoption and placement in an adoptive home instead of their biological home, is we only inserted that at the request of a DPHSS director. We were asked if we would please consider serving there. This is not our mission, is to serve within the foster care children. We want to support DPHSS. I have been a foster parent for several years. Tracy has been a foster parent, Kelly is an adoptee. We're very familiar with how the systems work, and we feel for the overburdened systems in almost every place. It's not just Guam, you know, there's a lot of things that cause children to go into foster care around our country. But that's the only reason that's written in there. We do not feel any need to have to be there. Kelly or Tracy, did you want to speak?
If you don't mind, I just want to chime in while the statement is out there because I'm not aware of any of the, of our directors saying, you know, requesting to have that part written in, or even the previous director, Linda Danorsy. Although I'm in constant contact with her, I will definitely get some clarification around that. I do know this, although Guam is not a member, we have done the monitor and placement of children that have come in from like India and so forth into Guam and placed with families out here. And we did that through Holt International, in which case, at the time, I was also an adoption and custody worker. So I have that experience as well, and it served on the Adoption Selection Committee. So and I do know that, at the time, they were doing monitor for placements for four years, four years, because even at that time, they were concerned about, sorry, my battery is very weak, or Mayface, even then, they were concerned about a level of human trafficking and so forth. So we will move cautiously and carefully. We will review, obviously, this bill and making sure that we, if it does move forward, we will work on the verbiage of it. But as you mentioned, this request was given to you by the director.
Yeah. We had a meeting right after we formed, about two months after we set up our agency, and we called DPHSS to have a meeting and talk about, let them know that we were here and, you know, what we were doing so they weren't confused, right, in case anything were to happen because Guam law says that you were to do home studies, et cetera, at that point, excuse me. But it was Linda Rodriguez who sat with us and asked us directly, would you please serve here? I do not have people to serve on my committee. I sometimes grab people at the last minute, people answering phones, to serve because I have no one. Those were her words to us. We said, well, of course. You know, she went on to many other things, asking us, could we do this? Could we do this? Could we do this? We actually had the offer of all the files given to us, which we refused because we've worked in the system, we know that isn't, that isn't allowed. So it was, you know, it was eye opening for us, not our mission, like I said. Our mission is to serve the other people in Guam and not to interfere with foster care. We only put that out there to try to offer help if we thought help was needed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boss and Mr. Uggan. And I'll let Senator Mary Torres, if you have any more questions, and then we'll move on to the next senator.
I just wanted to, since Teri was on the, I just wanted to mention, Teri, that the 48-hour relinquishment is really in conformance with the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act. And if there's some confusion about that, you know, I would just, I would just suggest that you circle back to that, because that, that was the basis for the, you know, that mention of the language, it's just writing on a current public law on Guam. But I'll let the others have a chance.
Senator, I appreciate, I'm not confused about the 48 hours as I was the fact that we are going to place this child with an organization. And obviously, they're going to have to place this child somewhere. And to me, that is likely to be a foster home. So I'm just trying to see how this system is any different from the other system. I do apologize, my, our mayface phone is crashing big time.
But that is, I see what we're trying to do, as was testified earlier. The idea was to minimize the placement and to actually put the child in a pre-screened adoptive home. So it's just cutting through the layers of handing over. So the idea was not to place a child in a foster, but, but I don't want to belabor that discussion. I think that if anything, you know, this afternoon's public hearing might have been a good opportunity, the roundtable to have a lot of this discussion. But unfortunately, it was canceled. But we can pick that up at another, another time.
If I could speak on this for just one minute. We at Ohala.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Anderson, okay, please go ahead.
Is that okay? Thank you. And we at Ohala Adoptions have followed stateside guidelines for establishment of our adoption agency, because the Guam laws have not, have not included adoption agencies. There weren't technically any laws here to follow. So what we have done is as closely as we possibly can, follow the things that we have learned from stateside adoption agencies. We've worked closely with American Adoptions, which is a nationwide, well-known adoption agency. We work with their founders and have received a lot of guidance and knowledge through them. But I think something that keeps coming back here is that our central focus is the placement of these children into a, into a pre-approved home. And so that's, I mean, I know that home studies have been discussed, and that's another topic. But as a service and as we build our family files as an agency, our families are all background checked, safety checked through whatever, whether it's Guam State or any other states that they've moved from, they all have background checks, and they have the national safety background check. We do all of the things that are required for the home study's safety. And then in addition to that, if required, the BASA CPS services can do the home study on top of that if they would, if they want that oversight. What we were asking for is to do that so that we could have families pre-approved to place children as soon as they're available. So if there is a child and needs a home in 48 hours, we have a family who is already background checked, home studied and ready to safely place this child for a permanent family. And that's, I think, one of the main focuses that, that may be being missed here.
You know, and I just have a question too, and I appreciate that. And I know within systems of care, there's a, there's a saying, it's, it said, no decision about us without us. So I'm glad that we're now being able to have these discussions and be more so part of this planning. It's critical, it's how we work with families. But in my mind, I'm trying to separate, how is it any different that you would have a family who's going to receive a child temporarily or as long as it takes for an adoption to go through? Any different from us placing a child in foster care while they're, while that child is waiting to be adopted? And I, and I guess that's, that's what I'm not quite clear about. It seems like our systems are very parallel. But I'm just trying to get that clarification, you know? If a child is removed for the purpose of adoption, and it's, it's a non-relative adoption, and a lot of our adoptions actually is when the natural parent or parents actually select the family that they wanted to go to, whether it's a relative or not. We have quite a number of those, we've had them through the years. But again, rarely that it is that opportunity to have a child just put up for adoption where the mom wanted to sever her rights and the dad, and then the child be placed in a home that's suitable for the child, especially if the child has special healthcare needs. So, so I understand that, and, you know, the willingness and ability to be trained and so forth. But I guess, again, my question is, is, you know, we are going to have the child, remove the child from the hospital after the mom gives birth, place the child in a suitable foster home. Whereas we, Public Health, okay. So in my mind though, based on what is written, that after 48 hours, the parents' rights have been relinquished, that the child then is turned over, in this case, over to, my understanding is to over to Ohala, the organization, the nonprofit, and that they will then place the child in also a temporary foster home. Is that correct?
I'll ask the sponsor of the bill, Senator Torres, if she'd like to comment. Then we can move on to the next senator.
Yeah, I think we do need to move on. The idea is to minimize the, the moving of the child in the foster care system. The idea is for the child to be relinquished to the adoption agency who already has in-line adoptive homes that would be suitable for consideration for placement of the child. So the idea is it's a more direct, as opposed to a foster care system where the child has the ability to be moved around. This is a more direct placement into a home that is, is pre-screened and most likely a suitable candidate for adoption of that child. So in short, yes, that is, that is what is contemplated here in the interest of the child, to minimize movement from foster care to foster care. They go directly from that to a prospective adoptive home.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. And before we move on to the, to the next senator, I believe we have Jen Nauta from Safe Haven, who'd like to give testimony on the bills.
Half a day and good morning. My name is Jen Nauta, I'm from Safe Haven Pregnancy Center. And I deal directly with mothers who come in in crisis situations. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the 14-year-old who got raped by her mother's boyfriend. And she came to us eight months pregnant. At Safe Haven, we give counsel, we, this is just an example I'm giving you guys. We counsel the moms, we give them all their options on what they can do. One of them is adoption. And so during this particular process, she decided to keep her baby. So we were all for that, we got her support that she needed, we loved on her, got her all her, you know, her baby item needs that she needed. Well, however, three months into having a baby and being a young teenager, she got overwhelmed, she wanted to place her baby up for adoption, and she already chose the family. Well, CPS stepped in and said, you can't pick your family. And she knows this family very well. And she was crying, saying she wanted, you know, to be able to pick her own baby. And they said, no, we need to take this baby out of your home, put, place it in foster care until we find a place. I also had another client where she already knew she does not want CPS to have anything to do with her children. We have women who come in and say, I don't want my child to go to CPS. I want to be able to pick my own family, I want it, or my auntie to adopt, or this. And of course, we want, these are girls, I'm not talking about ones that have family members, I'm not talking about the Chamorro local people who have family who are willing to extend. I'm talking about girls who come over from any other island who maybe don't have family, and they're pregnant, and they, they don't know what to do. Most of the girls who want to give their baby up for adoption is from crisis situations. They've been raped, they've been molested, they've been in the sex trade. I've had girls come in who are in the sex trade, and they're trying to get out, and they don't want to have their baby. But they also, at the same time, love their baby and want to see their baby adopted. There's been times when I tell a mom, I'm so sorry, because she's about to give birth, CPS says you, because I work close with CPS. They call us to place pregnant girls because they don't have enough homes as it is. I work close with Harvest House, hi Bethany, where we get calls all the time. CPS is overloaded, they're calling us. And now you're telling us that it's not okay for us to be a safe place to drop a baby? I had, I had a mom say, I'm giving birth, I don't want my baby, what do I do? And unfortunately, at GMH, you can't go up with an adoptive parent, or even I go up there and say, we're going to take the baby from her so she doesn't get overwhelmed, so she doesn't go home and drop the baby on a front doorstep or whatever. We have to go, I have to tell them, go to the parking lot, and we'll do it that way. It's just sad, it shouldn't be like that on this island. We want to help CPS, that's what we're here for. We don't do this for, you know, money, we don't do this for recognition even. We don't, we are here because there's an overwhelming need, and we don't want to see any more babies in dumpsters on front doorsteps or dying. And that's why we, I support this bill 100%. And I really do, whether the wording is different, whether you, you need to do in-depth, you know, with Ohala and their procedures, I think you should consider it because something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nauta, for your testimony. And I'll move to my vice chair, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier-Barnes, if you have any questions.
Good morning. Questions, questions first, Madam Chair, if I may. And I want to thank the author of the legislation for putting these two bills together and sharing her perspective on her first round of questioning, because it had answered a couple of my inquiries that I have to put out. For me, Madam Chair, the intent of putting these two bills and helping them was to look at seeing how else we can help our children in need. And I think that's the utmost importance and priority. And when we get opportunities like the nonprofits that are here today, Ohala and Jen, thank you for your testimony, because it literally truly brings to light working with the government. I also want to say, Madam Chair, I appreciate Teri's comments, Teri Uggan, because he's been in the system for, I guess, within the government for more than almost four decades. The same with me. And for me, I have to say that, is there a problem with the government to look at networking, bridging concerns, working closely with Public Health? Who, who inquired or assisted previously with a former supervisor to ask for assistance? Madam Chair, we look at the government to provide for the basic services for health, education and safety. Legislations like this hit those components very critically. And it has been successful in the past where there is a networking and bridging with nonprofit organizations to be included. Not saying to take over, is to assist, to help, to find the gaps, to make sure that when procedures and forms are put to place through the government, that there's a consistency. And I think that's where we need to be, is because we know that in the, in the times of, and what has happened between the previous or former, or elder generation compared to now, my thoughts are different. Family surroundings and environments are different. And as author also of the human trafficking legislation, I understand the need that if anything we do as leaders and policymakers is we have to look at the importance of that child. And I think the bridging of, of, of Public Health, CPS, the work that Lonnie Bren has picked up on her plate to assist and help, I think it's admirable. But I also think that we can, as a government, look and see how else we can help the government do right by the mission mandate. And working with NPOs is really key and critical. We see successes all over. We have Catholic Social Services, we have Salvation Army, we have all these nonprofits that come in to help. And for me, that, that logical thought is how else, though, if a nonprofit is stepping up to the plate, to nonprofits, how else can they help the government facilitate and move forward what needs to be done? And, and the author of the legislation brought up that there was supposed to be another public hearing this afternoon, and I think it's important. I think that if, if we put everything together, especially with the backlog of what's happening with Public Health, I think it's important that we at least look at networking and bridging the two organizations together. And my question would be to Teri. Teri, based on you working with, with other nonprofit organizations and having a system in place, you being at Public Health for over three decades, how do you see an NPO such as Ohala or such where Janet is, Janet or Jen is at? How do you see that working closely with the government to get support? Because those are vetted. The question that was answered by, that was asked by Senator Mary also brought up the policies with the court system and what the judges would need to go through and what the regulations that are in place with the court system now, those, those laws, would it be viewed or taken away? So I want to ask Teri, how does he feel about bridging and networking an NPO with Public Health? Teri?
And I apologize again, we're working on two, two different phones, and one is a delay. But how do I see the partnership between nonprofit working with government? Obviously, before in the past, they've been very successful. And as you mentioned, there's Catholic Social Services, Salvation Army, American Cancer Society, the list goes on and on. And when I, when I actually see the role of Ohala, I love it, believe me. I love the fact that if a person is willing to, or wanting to relinquish their rights as a parent, or a father for that matter, and they want their child to get for adoption, and they did not select the family, by all means, Ohala is that, that fit. I think what we need to do is just revisit the bill and how that particular organization is woven into it at multiple levels. Before in the past, Public Health actually did indeed maintain a list of potential foster homes in the event that somebody did give up their child. And what happened was, is we found ourselves constantly having to do home studies for families that actually would never adopt. And we were constantly having to update those home studies every year, just so that we would have them on file. And as a result of that, and because the less numbers of children that were available, you know, families became disillusioned, they had already gone through a very lengthy home study process. It was not favorable on their end. And so when we asked our families actually about being part of the list, and a lot of those families actually were military families that had come in to the island, they were stationed here, and they would say, I understand it's easier actually to adopt on Guam than it was, you know, Texas or wherever they were. But so I'm, I'm in favor of partnering with nonprofit organizations. I have no problems with that. But I just think we need to revisit the bill. I just think we need to revisit the bill and make sure that it's got the clarity that it needs and that it does not open up Guam in a situation where we've got literally children being funneled from Asia through Guam on their way out to other places, you know? And, and Senator, I know you can appreciate that, especially being part of the human trafficking. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Teri, and Madam Chair, if I may. The importance here is making sure that, that yes, that we dot our i's and cross our t's and Teri asking for making sure that we carve out legislation in consultation with Public Health to make sure that the, you know, that we have the right protocol and guidance in place. And I think that this is important when these. When these concepts came to me and I found out that Senator Torres was working on this measure also, I asked that we do it in concert with each other and get others on board because we knew that there was a need, we knew that there was a backup with public health, we knew that there was also a request and, and that there was a nonprofit coming up to the plate to assist. And now that we see that as said, I, I'm willing to work with public health to see what else do we need to make sure that we, we lock or close those gaps so that no, nothing negative comes out of this, right? And, and we all think for, for the interest of the child and that we make sure that if anybody's going to be ill-conceived or wanting to do something wrong, that those, those measures are already put to place to protect the integrity of the program moving forward. But I think it's important that the public health as a government look at the assistance of how this can move forward and help out. So, and as it relates to formalities and forms and putting everything in place, if we have to submit forms in, in one agency like the hospital and, or the mayor's office or public health, they should all be in uniformity. And I think, Madam Chair, that's important to also note that the, 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 the need to ask for information, get information and then, and make sure that every agency that's going to interact with what needs to happen for that child, that everything is uniformed with each other and that one form is not five pages long and the other form is, is, is one page long. Everything should be the same. So I think this is really, I, I think this public hearing was very important and I do believe that all the work that the nonprofits do out there to help our children here on Guam and even our, our, our Micronesian brothers and sisters from the blue continent that call Guam their home now, I think that we all should have that in mind to protect that. And I appreciate you, Madam Chair, giving me the opportunity and being a part of the co-sponsorship. I want to thank Mary for allowing me to help and assist her move these bills forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes will move now to Speaker Charisse Chalahi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to just address Bill 108 right now because I think that bills are completely separate and it's very confusing to talk about them together. I think Bill 108, you know, of course, so what it's, what I do is, well, there's several things. First of all, if I could ask, it was Bethany Taylor. One of the things that this bill does is to give priority consideration for adoptions to current foster parents. And I wanted to know what you think about that part of this bill. If you're able to speak now, otherwise you can, anyone, Jen, you can, you could chime in on that too. Or Bethany, or you, Ms. Taylor?
Could you please clarify 108 again for me and then ask the question again?
Sure, 108 is the bill that's going to, it says streamline adoption policies. And one of, one of the changes that it's making to our current regulations is to give priority consideration to current foster parents for adoption when selecting and adopt, the adoptive parents. Can't hear you, can't hear you, you're on mute, but Ms. Taylor, you're on mute.
Okay, excuse me, thank you so much for addressing this question. I do believe that it's very important. So what is happening of, I'm in the foster period for 13 years, so I have adopted two children out of the foster care system. I have had, I have three that are in a permanency plan. So I understand what it is for, to be a foster parent for so long in a child's life. And then CPS asks us, would you be considered a permanent placement for this child? Because it is not working out for the biological family. So in that case, what was happening was many of our foster families were being put on a list. So they were one of the three families of the adoption committee at CPS that they were, they would, they would be chosen out of to adopt the child that they had raised for however long in foster care. And I believe now that they are streamlining already to the point where foster parents get the first choice of adoption rather than being up for the adoption committee. But in the past, it wasn't like that. They were actually put in the adoption committee of the three families and hopefully they were chosen. The, I do believe, very personal and very passionately, that this bill needs to be passed because I think a foster parent who is already given all the bond and love to this family, to this child, should be considered first priority to the child to be adopted. We would want, if I raised a child which in most cases, like both of my two that I adopted, I raised for four years before they were adopted, I would want to be chosen as the adoptive family for them and not someone else just because they're placed up for adoption now, that their parental rights were taken. So this bill is very important that it gives the foster parents the privilege to adopt the children that they were, that they were fostering in the first place. Any other questions on that?
No, thank you, Ms. Brennan. Yeah. Has CPS considered a priority like this before?
So, so like as Terry Uggan explained, before we used to solicit, we used to, people would call and ask if we had any children for adoption. We would go ahead and do an adoption study on these families in case a child became available, as well as, you know, having them updated every year because that's what the law states. Now, over time, people just got dismayed and just stopped, you know, updating their. But other people that were interested thought, okay, why don't I just apply as a foster parent? But we always tell our foster parents, there's no guarantee that you'll be selected. But some of them hope, they hope for the best, especially when they receive a newborn infant. And they are given priority because we understand the bonding that takes place in the first few months. And so, but we always have to remind them that, you know, our work is really to reunify families. And so sometimes that gets, I guess, confused with, you know, why does it take so long to adopt? Because these children are not, you know, removed from their biological parents for the purpose of adoption, but sometimes that has to happen. So yes, foster parents are given first priority if they are interested in adoption.
Thank you.
And you know, I, I, I will add into that, you know, through the years, it was not always the case, that there were actual states that, that had passed laws that said that foster parents could not be considered because they realized that once foster parents actually took a child and adopted their foster child, that they stopped being a foster parent. So at one time, throughout the United States, you actually had a large number of people who had adoption was the intention, became foster parents along the way and then gave up that, that opportunity to be foster parent to adopt. On Guam, sort of that island way, is that, you know, we place a child in a foster home, we have all that, that wonderful time really to observe the placement. It isn't your priority because you're the foster parent. It's priority because it's a positive placement, that there's bonding that has taken place, that we've had that opportunity to see how the, the foster parent nurtures the child, anything to do around discipline, anything to do around nutrition, all types of things that we look at. And really making that child be the special person, the little person, but special person that they are. And so when, when that decision is made to be able to, to have a foster parent adopt, it's based on a series of things and it, it isn't that just because of the foster parent, it's because of a positive placement. Okay?
All right, so they would naturally become the priority because they already have a bond and they, they have been proven to be a successful placement and.
Absolutely, it's, it's through a series of home visits, yes.
All right, okay, and I appreciate that and I appreciate that type of thing that this bill points out. But I think as the, the representatives from public health have pointed out, adoptions are not the problem at public health right now. That is not the delay that they are facing, the backlog that they are facing is finding foster parents and, and, and find, and, you know, addressing emergency situations with children. And so I do appreciate all, you know, safe havens, the nonprofits that assist public health in these efforts. It is a crisis for our entire island. But I, I do believe that in the absence of regulation of adoption agencies on Guam, as, as they pointed out, one of the adoption agencies that wants to stop this here on Guam has said that they, there is no law. And that is correct, there is no law currently, and I think that's what public health is trying to tell us. That needs to be established first and they should always be regulated by, by public health. Because, or, or BOSA, yeah, that this is within their realm to, to determine what are we going to do? Because what we, this bill proposes to do, and I would very much advocate that that happen first. Because this bill proposes to, in the place of public health, the Department of Social Services, that in its place, in, in its, instead of public health, making that list of potential adoption families. And I believe there is a great demand for, to adopt babies here on Guam. I just know this as a lawyer, that, you know, people want to adopt babies and I don't think, you know, we need to look even off-island for these adoptions to take place. You know, maybe once in a while, but right now Guam is not part of, you know, the compact on adoptions. And, and so adoptions the other way have actually been problematic. They do not, you know, easily allow adoptions to parents on Guam right now and, and from other states. But, so I would, I would say that, yeah, I, I echo the concerns where we are in this bill replacing public health with the adoption agency. And for example, they do this when they say that infants relinquished under the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act will not require a meeting under the adoption screening process or, yeah. And the adoption screening process is a committee that was supposed to be formed at public health where they, they vet the parents who want to be adoptive parents. And they get vetted and, and there's nothing to prevent them from being vetted in advance. And I think that's what these adoption agencies want to do too. So they both, as Terry said, parallel, you know, what they want to do and it's good. But I don't think there's anything to prevent adoption agencies today from, you know, being put on, or putting whatever adoption parents, prospective adoptive parents on, on public health's list and assisting in all the other ways that they have described. And that, but that public health in the end continue to, to vet these placements. And especially if this bill continues to require public health to monitor those. And there's nothing in our current law that prevents this from being done in advance. As Terry has said, they used to do that in advance. So that these families are, are vetted and are, are kind of, I don't know, matched or prioritized. I don't know whatever else you do, but those types of things I am sure public health is capable of doing. The other thing is this physical custody. So according to this bill, the newborn child is taken from the hospital by an adoption agency to a pre-approved adoptive home. And again, I would just, if, if this arrangement has not been made legally or in any, you know, other way, well legally, prior to birth of the child, then, then I, I, yeah, it's again, replacing public health's role in, in just that physical custody. And if there is a, a adoptive home lined up, there's nothing to prevent public health from, from doing that. And, and in other words, that symbiotic relationship or that, you know, mutually beneficial relationship that I think the sponsors of the bill want, we should have. And that, that can occur, and I just don't think though that we should supplant public health's role in, in vetting and in, in ensuring the placements of these children. So that's my, yeah, those are my concerns on Bill 108. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll wait for another round on Bill 109.
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. We'll move now to Senator Jose Pito Chalahi, if you have any questions.
First of all, thank you very much, Madam, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank the, the author of the bill, Senator Mary Torres, for introducing the bill. And I, I just want to say that I stand in support of this particular bill. However, there's some issues that were brought up by, especially Mrs. Brennan, Mrs. Archangel and Mrs. Taylor and also Jen Nauta and also Mr. Uggan. And though I am in support of the bill, we need to really just dialogue and revisit the bill like what Mr. Uggan had mentioned. And maybe we can monologically interact and maybe put our input in as far as those that were discussed and the issues that were mentioned by, by some of the panel members. And I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for, for, for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Chalahi. I will move now to Senator Chris DeWainis.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for the opportunity to express my feelings and also maybe ask a question. I want to start by sharing a story. Fifty-seven years ago, a miracle amongst many miracles on Guam happened. A priest in a church came to one of my relatives and asked a relative of mine if we would take a child into our family. That happened and today, that individual is a flourishing individual, somebody who we love very much. And we're so glad that happened. I think that's what these bills are trying to do and why I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. I have to say I'm a little concerned and perplexed and Madam Chairwoman, I don't believe this is going to go outside of your rules. I understand the concerns brought up by Department of Youth Affairs, Public Health and other representatives, directors and deputy directors and the like. But when we're talking about the law, and I think that the author kind of alluded to this, when we're talking about the law and what's in place, I would prefer a well-written testimony so that it can enumerate the concerns and why the current public laws that exist on Guam, protecting children and protecting the process and the government's oversight, be cited. In that vein, I want to ask the representative from the beginning, I believe the president of Ohala, to share with the committee the process under which you undertook to become a licensed adoption center on Guam.
Thank you, Senator. And we at Ohala, like I mentioned, had a background in working with children with different, with adoption and foster care and such. And so we went through training programs. We have done, as foster parents in the States, you generally have to have many hours of training just to be a foster parent. In my state where I was licensed, it was 32 hours before a child could ever be placed in your home. And then you had many hours every month that we had to continue training to deal with things like the trauma, separation anxieties, all these kinds of things that children deal with. Then is, when we got together as a group, we underwent online trainings and trainings in person. Kelly went to Kansas City, met with the director of American Adoptions who started that. I contacted Holt Adoptions, the Holt International now, which is started by a woman I grew up with in my small hometown in Oregon. We, we went and contacted a lot of different agencies to find out what exactly needed to be done to be above board in everything. And we have used all of Guam laws with our attorney Jacqueline Chalahi to make sure that to make sure that we met or exceeded everything that's on the island of Guam. Like our background checks, our FBI background checks, our, um, everything. This is why the clearance, the pre-approval clearance was so important to us. And when we had a mother earlier that we needed to have that clearance done so that that baby would go immediately into one placement, we requested that from DPHSS, and we're told they will do it up to ninety days after the placement was made. And that will be addressed more in, in the other bill concerning home studies. But, um, we are trying to align ourselves to the highest level we can to make everything above board. We have no secondary agenda. It's like you said, Senator, to help provide homes for these children. They, we know, we hear a lot about women in crisis. We actually have had more of the mothers that come to us, our college-educated women on this island, that see other avenues for their lives and want to make a change. Adoption has changed a lot in the last few years. Um, most adoptions are familial adoptions or kinship adoptions, which we wholeheartedly agree with. Our goal is to keep children in their culture, even if they have to be sent off island. And the, there's only a few cases that are, you know, there, that warrant that. Um, maybe a medical case where children can't get that medical need here. And we actually have people from Guam that are living stationed with military and other things off island that have contacted us. And those are the families that we keep in our family file. Those are the people that we have done the background checks on. And we've done everything in our power to try to train ourselves to be up current on what is happening now in the world of adoption. And, you know, being careful with everything we do. We have approached DPHSS when we, our initial meeting with Linda. And since asking for approvals from them. If they want to give us a test or, you know, a checklist of things that they would like us to meet standards, that's perfectly fine with us. We think everyone should be held to standards and laws so that we make sure it's all above board and there is nothing sketchy or funny that goes on that, you know, these adoptions are processed appropriately.
Ma'am, knowing that you are declaring here in this public hearing, which is part of our record, that you're following and you believe the laws of Guam are durable and strong with regard to adoption policies, please address the concern of human trafficking through adoption agencies. And do you believe that's something that we should be afraid of with regard to these bills?
I can address that. Can I trade it to Tracy, whose husband is an FBI agent and knows all about this?
I would very much enjoy that. Turn over.
I'm sorry, I don't know that my husband's qualifications count for myself. But I would speak to that in that, um, knowing a, a lot about human trafficking through his work and through also speaking with, um, Ms. Jane Flores in the governor's office, that we have done research into, um, how that takes place through adoption. Um, we have really centrally focused our services only to Guam. Our services are for Guam families, for Guam children. We are not intending in any way to bring children to the island because we're not doing anything international and we're not intending to send children from the island. If there is a case that a family in the States would adopt a child, we are keeping families that have ties to Guam as options. The human trafficking side of that, I think, is very much minimized by the goals and the missions that our organization has been, um, established.
Thank you, and thank you to Ohala. I want to just ask one more question, uh, Madam Chair, and that would be to Ms. Nauta. Ms. Nauta, you had such an impassioned representation, and I want to see if I'm going in the right direction here. Most of what we're trying to do here more than likely is help mothers with possible unexpected pregnancies, whether to full-term, currently pregnant, or have a child, that they're in crisis and they don't have any future for that child. Has that been your experience? And is that what we're trying to do here to try to find healthy homes for children, babies, and maybe those who are unborn?
Thank you. Yes, a, absolutely. We are trying to find safe, um, homes for, uh, the babies. We, we at, um, Safe Haven also do, we actually use DP, uh, Department of Public Health's, um, background checks and, um, their, how they do their end study in their homes and stuff like that. The women who come, sometimes they don't know if they want to give their baby up for adoption. Um, a lot of times they don't, they just don't want a baby, you know? And so we educate them on what they're, uh, what they can do here in Guam. And so, you know, they don't always come in wanting a baby. Um, but when we offer, you know, that there's other ways, there's adoption, um, they, their first thing they always ask is, do I have a choice? Do I have a choice where my baby goes? I don't want you just take my baby. We're like, absolutely not. We walk step by step with the mothers. We give them counseling because just because you give your baby up for adoption doesn't mean, um, you know, that's it. They still have an emotional thing that they go through afterwards. Um, and so we, we have trained counselors who actually deal with, with our mothers. But that is absolutely our intention, is to find safe, safe homes. Um, and I actually see a lot of, um, the crisis part, uh, urgent situations where even mothers who are pregnant are on the run, you know, whether it's from a spouse or, um, you, whatever the case may be. And we actually find homes for her to say, and put her in a safe home to actually be, um, safe to carry her baby to term and, and time, um, give her baby up for adoption. But we have come across many hard things when it comes to CPS, even though we, we work alongside of them, um, just wanting to take the baby and put it strictly in foster care when these mom, moms want to give their baby, um, to a home. They don't want to see it go in the system to home, to home, to home. So if there's some way that we can figure out, um, and get approved, you know, if, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I just know that it needs to be done better than what happens right now. And we've also had women who say, can you take my baby? They've asked people at Safe Haven, um, because we spent many months with them. Sometimes when they first find out they're pregnant, they're eight weeks, and they get to know our advocates, they get to know their counselors, they get to, and they, they just, they feel safe at Safe Haven, I guess you could say. So yes, absolutely, we would like to find a way to, um, provide those homes that are approved for these babies to go directly into instead of years later, um, having to go through home to home to home. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Nauta. And Madam Chair, um, I, I really cannot overemphasize this. While I, while I respect Ms. Brennan's representation, Ms. Archangel's representation, and Mr. Uggan's, uh, representation, I really think our government agencies need to, uh, also be held to a standard that when they're challenging the law in an anecdotal way and discussing what exists, please make citations so that the author, myself, and other co-sponsors can make proper amendments. Because I believe what Ohala, what Safe Haven, and what Harvest House are trying to do, uh, is something that is so important, and it's God's work. And the bottom line is, is that we need to move. If we need another law, then let's introduce it tomorrow. If we need to make the law more durable, let's introduce it tomorrow if we find gaps. But I, I think the intent of these bills is strong, and I think they, they stand up to Guam law. And I thank all of you in Human Services for the work that you've been doing, and, and I pray for you every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator DeWainis. And we'll move now to Senator James Moyland. Senator Moyland?
There you go. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first question is for, um, Mr. Uggan. Sir, you, um, you mentioned that Guam does not have an orphanage. And I, I believe you gave your, your reasonings, but I'm wondering, do you think Guam does need an orphanage, please?
No, sir, I don't. And I'll, I'll be honest with you too. We talk about children that are placed into foster care with the intention of the child being up for adoption. You know, it's actually a safeguard that we have had women who have literally changed their mind about uh, putting their child up for adoption. And so even when we would do the pre-studies for adoption and had a listing of adoption placements, uh, we were very cautious about making sure that in, indeed, the natural mother, the biological father, were very clear about their, their interest in terminating their parental rights. Because again, we have had them change their mind. So, uh, believing me, uh, we're all about strengthening laws. Uh, we're all about making sure that we're inclusive of nonprofit organizations. I think they bring balance to the government and they hold the government accountable. But at the same time, we move forward cautiously. And therefore, I know people look at apparently foster placement as not always a positive thing in regards to the bonding of this child. But that is a safeguard mechanism to allow the natural mother and the biological father that opportunity to change their mind. And they have. And that's part of why we, again, don't have a lot of children that are up for adoption. And the last one, as Lonnie mentioned, uh, was in 2017. So, um, going back to your question though regarding orphanage, you know, I, I see it right now, in the bigger picture, we don't have a lot of, of services around or placements around not only children, but even our, our elderly, for that matter. Uh, that we do have St. Dominic's as a care facility, but it is not considered an old folks' home as they also take people with disabilities. Um, Guam is unique in its culture. It really is. And it's, we talk about, you know, changing up or building up. Change isn't always building up. Sometimes it's just change. Uh, I think we have a lot to be proud about here. Do we need to clean up or, or make our system stronger? Uh, there's always room for improvement. But I take great pride actually in the fact that as of right now and in the past, we've not had an orphanage, um, to actually house our, our children. Uh, that we have for the most part, either people who give up their child or want to give up their child, um, but then end up changing their mind. We've even had people, it was mentioned earlier about, uh, a young person who, uh, didn't have a choice in their placement. Um, but actually I'm getting clarification on that too, to find out that actually they did. So I think we just need to really stay on target, stick close or stick to the facts, and really have a, a quality conversation, um, down the road and in the future. Uh, and believing me, you know, with, with roughly thirteen hundred referrals of child abuse and neglect on island, and a good number of those referrals for the purpose of substance abuse, um, that down the road, you know, the possibility is strongly there. The fiber of our families definitely is challenged with as much substance abuse that there is on this island. So I am open to that down the road and in the future. But again, I take great pride in what we do have in place now. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Uggan. Uh, next question is for Ms. Archangel Theresa. Would you have a approximate, maybe a monthly average of new children that are added to foster care?
Uh, I, I, I don't have that on top of my head. But, uh, we do have on a weekly basis, uh, an average of probably, it, it depends, it depends. So an average of four, four to five? Or Mayfe, if you can, uh, the recent data that you have?
I think I can provide, um, an answer to that, if I may. So currently, there are four hundred and twenty-three children in some type of foster care placement. And like Tess says, it, it varies between weeks. Um, since we were working on the backlog, we've seen an increase. So when I first walked in, in February, it was at three ninety-something, and now it's currently at four twenty-three since last we checked.
Lonnie, hi, good, good morning, everyone. Uh, this is Mayfe Moiko. I am the Social Services Supervisor for the Home Evaluation Placement Section. And we actually have four hundred and thirty-two foster children in our system as of last Friday. The majority of them are with relative placement. And last week alone, we exerted twenty-one foster children.
Okay, eh, thank you. And how many foster care homes are there on Guam?
Uh, right now, we have thirty-nine licensed foster homes. And, uh, what do you call, uh, we have relative placements. We have, I believe, fifty-three. I could be wrong. I don't have the stats in front of me. But we have, uh, fifty-three, uh, homes, um, uh, what do you call that, approved by CPS that are not relative placement. No, relative placement, we have. In relative placement, I believe, and I'm going by memory, uh, uh, senators, uh, from, um, my last, uh, weekly report, I believe we have two hundred and twenty-two relative placements.
Okay, thank, thank you. Do you have an average length of time the foster child is, is at the foster parent's home?
No, it, it, it varies. It depends, you know, our goal is to always work with parents. And the goal is always to reunify. So we place these children with foster parents, with relative placement, non, uh, non-relative placement, a home approved by CPS. And we, and the social workers all work for them for the best interest of these children. The ultimate goal is always to do reunification.
Okay, uh, when you do get the foster, okay, when, when you do get the foster children? I'm sorry, go right ahead, go right ahead, Teresa.
I would just state that the licensed foster parents, it's, it's actually decreasing. In fiscal year two thousand eighteen, we have fifty-two. In fiscal year two thousand nineteen, it's forty-six. And then fiscal year two thousand twenty, it's forty. Yeah, that's the data that was, uh, given to me towards the end of the fiscal year. So, but currently, I mean, I, I, uh, they haven't given me that data.
Can you say your last part? I, I didn't hear your last part one more time, please, Teresa.
Okay, the, the licensed foster parents is actually decreasing. In fiscal year two thousand nine, eighteen, there are fifty-two. In two thousand nineteen, there are forty-six. And in twenty-twenty, it went down to forty. But currently, I, 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 I don't have that data currently.
Okay, would you know the reason for the decrease?
The reason for the
Go ahead, Mayfe.
The reason for the decrease is the majority of our foster parents are from the military. So they leave the island. So that's the decrease.
Okay, when, when you get children added to the, uh, for the foster parents, are they usually single children or is, is this siblings?
Well, we try to keep, we, yeah, we try to keep them together, but unfortunately, it is real difficult. In the last couple of weeks, like last week, I indicated we had twenty, I, we exerted twenty-one children. Last week, in one family had six children, the other had seven children. And we placed those children with relative placements.
So are you saying these foster homes are like overutil, have, are at their capacity or are they underutilized?
No, they have all met their capacity and then some.
So you can use it
They are over. And I believe the, uh, there was a time when they could only have six, uh, children to also include their children. And now they can surpass six with the approval of, uh, the Director of, uh, Public Health.
Okay, so you can use more foster, foster parent homes?
I'm constantly looking for foster parents daily. It's a daily
How many more homes are, would reach your need if it was today? How many more would you need?
Uh, you know what, I, I would, I would take unlimited. I wouldn't put a number. I would always, I would, I would, I would hope that, uh, when I make that phone call that a child need a, needs a home, that a foster home will be available.
And, and that's the purpose for the group home that we, we are trying to establish. The Guma Minasik.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you, public health. Uh, next question is for Jen at Safe Haven. Jen, you've been saying you were in business for now, how many years or how long? Sorry.
Um, officially since two thousand eighteen.
And how many children has Safe Haven helped?
Um, it's mainly teen, pregnant teenagers. We've, we've probably had, um, since January, a little over fifty. Not, not pregnant teens, just women coming in, um, fearful or crisis situations. And not all of them actually. Maybe they need a pregnancy test or since the pandemic, um, a lot of, uh, help or counseling. So I have four girls now, two giving the babies up for adoption and, um, two that are, uh, pregnant.
Okay, so you're saying you, you average a, a month? What do you think?
Um, probably a couple a week is what we see. Not all of them are adoptions, obviously, but, um, a lot of them are, they're just pregnant. They don't know what to do. Especially in this pandemic, they just lost their job or their other half doesn't want anything to do with the baby, but they want to keep the baby. How can they keep the baby? Um, then we have a program at Safe Haven where they go to free classes that we offer on how to take care of their pregnancy, how to take care of their baby, um, how to, you know, write a resume, uh, um, just a lot of classes. And then they earn points so they can shop in our blessing room. And then we, they get a crib. They get everything needed. By the time the baby is born, they get all of their, um, necessities for the baby.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jen. Uh, my next question is for Bethany Taylor, Harvest House. Wa- was there a time that, uh, Bethany, that you, you've reached your capacity?
Yes, Senator, we actually helped, uh, change the law because we, um, have been foster parents for eighteen, or for thirteen years and had over forty foster children in our home, not at the same time, obviously. Um, but we normally have, um, you know, six. And then we wanted to have a sibling come in with our three that we already had. They had a sibling. But by law, we couldn't take her because we went, we had reached our capacity at six. Um, so then we got that law changed and we were able to take her and we have seven. And now we currently have eight in our home.
Okay, you, you got a couple over your capacity, maybe?
Over our capacity, but we have them all.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Thank, thank you very much. Uh, last question, Madam Chair is for Lori at Ohala. Um, I don't think you have a, you don't have any capacity, do you, Lori? Where are you?
Capacity for what, Senator?
Yeah, there, there's no, there's no cap, right? There's no, you know, you're not holding anybody. You're just adopt, placing them elsewhere, right? So there's nothing.
We got our FBI background checks and approvals, um, locally in case we need to keep a baby overnight for some reason or something. But our, our job is, I mean, our purpose isn't to take infants or children and hold them. And so, no, we would only be a transfer mode to a pre-approved place.
Madam Chair, I just raised, we're talking about foster care through all of this discussion and then, uh, switching to adoption and the bill is strictly on adoption. So you can't compare the two. I mean, they're two completely different procedures even for CPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think, uh, it's all part of the conversation dealing with, uh, foster parents who may eventually become adoptive parents. So, uh, that is why I allowed it. And now we will move on. Thank you very, very much, Senator James Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Uh, Senator Joanne Brown, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. And certainly I, I appreciate the discussion today with regards to this bill. Um, it obviously, you know, touches on issues that I think all of us who have concern in our community, it, it's a very sensitive issue. I think anytime certainly we read or hear about, you know, children in our community that have not been taken care of or have been abandoned or, you know, left in abusive circumstances within their family. It's very troubling to all of us because, you know, these are our, our members of our community that are the most vulnerable that we want to ensure are well taken care of. And I think collectively, the organizations here that are providing testimony as well as, um, members of our government representatives from our departments that also work with these children, um, all want to do their best foot forward. It's just a question is how, how can we bridge that so that, uh, we have that continuous motion together of how we can all help each other uh, and work to address what's best ultimately for these children. Um, one of the things with the bill I did want to ask, and I, I certainly understand us wanting to see how we can facilitate if a parent is unable for whatever reason, um, to assume the responsibilities of taking care of their children. Because I, I know just a couple of years ago, we heard about that one mother that, uh, you know, I know that case might still be going through the legal system, but may have, um, been involved in, in the killing of her baby. And you know, gosh, when we hear stories like that, they're just so horrific, you know? Um, you know, we're like, what can we do to assist? Because we know there's many in our community that would, uh, if they were able to want to take these children in. Or in most cases, I see the trying to do the balance between adopting, you know, having a child that you can adopt versus the emotional challenges that uh, foster parents go through. Uh, many are, are able to provide the assistance, but then there are also those that wish they could, you know, after raising these children, keep these children as their own. So we have all these issues on the table and it's like, how can we bridge that over? And I, I wanted to ask those that are testifying if they can provide some input. And then also the one main question that I have for those of you that have dealt with these, most cases it's the mother of obviously that's coming forth, but, um, you know, looking at the form that's provided here, a, a mother would have like forty-eight hours to, you know, change her mind, so to speak. And I, I don't know if I was in that situation, if that was something that I could come to terms with within such a short time because I'm sure the situation is already very challenging, very stressful. Um, regardless of how they got there. Uh, but is that a reasonable period of time? And if a mother chose to change her mind after that, what recourse do they have? Cause I'm assuming at that very moment, they're probably in a crisis mode. Um, maybe not in a stable family situation. Maybe they don't have the family support. Uh, or whatever the case may be, but you know, that's something, would we look at that as a reasonable time? Or is there a longer period of time that can be put in place, uh, in the event the mother is able to change her mind? So that, you know, they're not looking like, okay, I'm sorry, it's forty-nine hours later and you've totally lost your parental rights and you have no recourse. So those are just the thoughts that I'm putting on the table. But, but again, I appreciate, I think everyone here that's involved, including the sponsors of this bill, want to put forth what's the best effort we as a community can provide. Uh, you know, to provide a, a safe, uh, place and, and area and a home where our children can grow up and be good and productive citizens. So I just wanted to put those issues forth. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And now move on to Senator Frank Blash Jr.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for everyone that's, uh, here on, at this public hearing. Quite honestly, I'm just, I, I would just prefer to sit back and, and listen to the public testimony uh, on the, on the bill. I personally, uh, I am in support of, of, of the measures. Um, I am in support of being able to provide, you know, the families in the, in this case, uh, you know, females who want to be able to, to, to have their, to, to give birth to their child, uh, may not have the ability to be able to, to care for them. Uh, but now are more comforted in being able and making sure that, uh, they have the ability um, to be able to place their child in a loving and caring home and a, a, a home that they are comfortable with as well. So we very much appreciate the conversation. I understand the concerns and the challenges, uh, you know, with the, with the, the government entities are having. But, uh, I think that with, uh, the organizations that are stepping up to the plate and want to be, and want to help. Um, I'm a firm believer that, uh, if the community can provide for it, uh, quite, very, very bluntly, the government step out of the way. Uh, give them the support and give them, but, but I, I think that as, as we can see here, it's a positive step in being able to, for the, for the community to be able to, uh, work with and, and to help to resolve a community problem. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you very much. And to all of you again, thank you very much. I'm going to continue to listen.
Thank you, Senator Frank Blash Jr. Uh, I know.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to follow up because I did have a question before you went to Senator Blash. Uh, so when you're completed with him, can I go back and re-ask my question for the parties there?
Oh, I apologize, Senator Brown.
No, no problem.
Sorry, I missed that.
If Senator Blash is finished, has he finished?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I, I just wanted to ask, um, for those, uh, parties involved. I mean, because the, the, what is looked at and attached to the bill puts a forty-eight hour timeframe. I just wanted to get their feedback on that and dealing. I'm, I'm sure every, every mother there probably has different circumstances, but is that a reasonable timeframe for a mother to sign off her? You know, I'm sure she's briefed on what her legal, um, you know, what, what she has available to her and what she may be giving up formally. But I just wanted feedback for those that actually deal with these mothers, what, what their thoughts are. Do they think that's a reasonable period of time? Or should be there be a longer period of time? Uh, cause that's a pretty big decision to make and they might be making those decisions during moments of challenge and pressure and crisis. So uh, for those of you that, that have this experience and expertise, if you can give us some feedback on that.
Hi, good morning. This is Mayfe Moiko. And as I read the bill concerning the forty-eight hours, um, I thi- I believe that it mimics the, the, the law where when child protective services exert individuals under protective custody, we have forty-eight hours to complete our declaration and ex parte. Um, so that may be the reason why the forty-eight hours is in there. But in adoption, they should be, get, they should receive counseling prior to, uh, making that determination. So I believe the forty-eight hours was in there to determine, um, you know, all the documentations have been, uh, in place with the court system and so forth. My concern is once, uh, the biological parent, um, signs their termination of parental rights, that's when, um, it's difficult to, uh, un- undo the adoption.
And then I can add.
Go ahead.
So forty-eight hours applies to the Safe Haven law because the mother or the parent who brings the, the infant, the unharmed infant to a place, um, like the hospital, a Safe Haven, a designated Safe Haven drop spot. Um, that would be where a forty-eight hour timeline would apply. However, in adoption, currently Guam law states that they have up to one year to finalize. In the state, it's different. As, as immediate to max six months. But Guam law currently is still allowing up to one year. And that should, that probably should be changed because, um, over fifty years ago in the States, they started changing that law where it wasn't one year because it's, it's, it's terrible emotionally for the biological parents to think, I still have a year and it's just hanging over their heads. And it also hangs over the adoptive parents' heads that at any point they could come take my baby away. So that's why the post-placement visits are done. And every, um, state has its own set of, um, rules on how that's carried out and how often. But, um, typically it's done quarterly for the first year. So, um, that would have to be something that Guam decides. But yes, forty-eight hours is Safe Haven and then up to one year is adoption.
I can tell you, um, just from my own experience that, um, if, if a mom changes her minds, it's, it's normally in the first couple of months that she'll change her mind. Um, based just on the experience that I've, I've experienced at Safe Haven.
So do you think that what the forty-eight hours is a reasonable, obviously, I mean, in comparison, forty-eight hours to several months is a very different dynamic? In terms of giving up your, yeah, I just want to get clarification when you actually signed to give up your parental rights.
So, um, the forty-eight hours is, uh, through, like Kelly said, through the Safe Haven law. And if a, if a mother in this situation does turn her, her child over to a Safe Haven provider, um, they, she does have that forty-eight hours to come back to the hospital and say she would like her rights as a parent back. At that point, CPS is involved to help her get the services that she needs to be a parent and to be successful in parenting. If she does not come back in that forty-eight hour period of time, CPS does hang on to legal custody. And the Safe Haven law then allows for that child to go to an adoptive home. The legal custody then proceeds through the courts. So no, it's not going to be final until Guam courts and law decide that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. That does clarify. And one, one other thing was mentioned earlier is what if the biological father, maybe that individual may not know at the time, maybe they find out after that, you know, this is my biological child. Uh, and the mother maybe has already gone through the course of wanting to put the child up for adoption. What recourse does a biological father have in these cases, uh, if they want to, uh, receive custody of that child? I'm just, I'm, I'm sure there are a lot of questions. It's just one in, in the back of my mind as well that was mentioned earlier. And I'm sure maybe, I don't know if you, you directly had to deal with that, but, uh, just.
Another aspect of the Safe Haven law is that when the child is relinquished, the forty-eight hours then is part of what CPS then works to find out if it's listed as an abandoned or stolen, you know, that, that this child is not considered a missing child. Um, and as, as in a, an infant abandoned, if a parent were to come forward and say, I think this is my child, of course, there would have to be, um, paternity tests or, or legal actions taken. Um, but, so those aren't ruled out, but as, um, the forty-eight hours is kind of the law in order to make sure that that child is actually being turned over in a legal manner.
Okay. And one last question. I mean, in, in terms of the, your organization, how is, how has that process been? I mean, obviously we hear there's a demand out there, desire of, of members of our community want to adopt children. Uh, and you guys are assisting and, and again, you know, bridging over that process from, from a biological parent for whatever reason may not be able or capable of taking care of a child and perhaps giving them the quality of life they would have, would like to have for their child. How, how are you seeing that process? Uh, in your organization moving forward and providing the, the additional assistance you are, additional layer of support that you're providing in the community? How has that been? If you can give us some insight to that.
Kelly, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. We, um, have actually had a really great experience with counseling with the mothers. We are, part of our mission is, it, well, part of it is to support women. But, um, in doing that, we provide counseling. We would never tell them that adoption is their best option. We give them every option. We explain what their options are. What, what is of each option would be. Let them decide what they want to do. And thankfully, two of our mothers who have come to us wanting to get the process going, the adoption process going, have been able to choose parenting. They realized after they were educated and supported by us that I can do this. This is possible. And it's not going to be this scary, um, unknown that she, that she was going to be stepping into. So thankfully, we've been able to help women in that way. And that's a lot of what Jen is doing too. She's another really great force, um, on the island, um, when it comes to supporting women. And, um, we, um, we just feel really good about the fact that education is a huge component of our mission, that no one is getting ba- we're not soliciting babies. We would never do that. That's unethical, quite honestly. And we support kinship adoptions. If a mother comes to us and says, so that's like our hierarchy. We'd say like, parenting your child is the best thing. Cause that biological connection between mother and child, yes, that trumps everything. Second option, let's talk about your family ties. Do you have family members that can help you? Um, either adopt or help you parent? And then after that, we want the baby, if the mother desires, we would like the baby to stay on island within its own culture. And in a place where that baby is supported and can grow within its own cultural references. After that, if the mother say she, there was an incest case, the mother wants the baby off of this island, then we would reach out to, we'd give her the files of families who are Guam tied, but off island. And we've even told families who reach out to us from the States, who are not of any, have no tomorrow or, um, Guam ties at all. We tell them, you can apply, but we're very transparent. We say our goals are kinship, Guam, culture, all those things. And we are not, we do not beat around the bush at all. We're fully, we fully acknowledge that.
Madam Chair, thank you. And thank you for those of you that responded. Uh, again, this has been actually. Madam Chair, thank you and thank you for those of you that responded. Again, this has been actually one of the more, I can't say enjoyable, but very informative um, hearings that we've had on a bill because it does bring up, you know, issues that are so close to the fabric of our community and, and a lot of good, you know, we can see come out of some very sad and unfortunate situations, but thank you very much for taking the time to provide us with more information and enlightenment. And thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to go back and be able to ask these questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. I apologize for that earlier. And I know Senator Therese, our Speaker Therese Trelawney uh, had some questions on uh, Bill one oh nine. If you'd like to go ahead before I give it back to the sponsor to close.
Here, thank you. But I think Mr. Uh, or the Deputy Director of Public Health had his hand up.
You, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll be very quick. Um, you're right when regarding the father who finds out that, that he has a child out there and wanting to be part of that child's life. And so during the process of termination of parental rights, actually, there is a component that that actually has to, you have to advertise within so many weeks, and I think it's within three week period, for a period of three weeks, uh, identifying that the parental rights of this, this particular person uh, is up for, available for adoption. Of course, it's not by name, it's not by a number of things. But it, there is a mechanism in place that sort of safeguards the, the rights of the father. And of course, that does not happen within that forty-eight period, forty-eight hour period. Um, but a- again, and, and granted, we don't want children going from home to home to home, as it was mentioned earlier. But it has been a safeguard putting a child in foster placement where a foster parent has no intention on adopting this child, but they're there to hold the child and it allows the system to work its way through. And that is, part of that is the mom possibly changing her mind, you know, getting more and more educated about the services that are available here on island. Uh, a lot of the baby basics, which we do offer a course at Public Health called Baby Basics, uh, and getting, getting our young people engaged and involved regarding that. And um, and then of course, the uh, notification regarding the parental rights uh, that instead of the child going directly into a, a prospective adoptive home, it does allow that buffer for the mom to actually change her mind. And it does allow the time in which the natural father is notified. Um, and of course, I see the benefits behind the child going into a loving, safe, nurturing home from the get-go. And that it's a disadvantage if the child is, is not in one for a lengthy period of time. Uh, but clearly there are certain mechanisms that, that are around adoption that are not, you know, just around the regular loving family that mom gives birth and the child remains in the family. So thank you for your time and I definitely will turn the floor back over.
Thank you very much, uh, Deputy Director Ugin. Thank you for your input and your time today on this bill. I'll turn it back to Speaker Trelawney.
Thank you. So Bill one oh nine is, is very different. It's specifically in regards to the Safe Haven Act and not um, adoption in general. And so it's under that Safe Haven Act that's already been adopted on Guam that uh, you know, allows a mother to within first custody of her newborn in various um, play pavements, places, hospitals, including CPS and other places. But um, in surrendering the newborn, so the one thing that the bill does is allows um, the nine-one-one responders to, to take custody. And so I don't, uh, that's temporary custody. And then, you know, make sure the medical needs are addressed and then um, CPS always gets custody after that, but uh, physical custody. But I have no issues with that. Uh, it, it pretty much adds them to the, the, you know, receivers of the babies in the safe haven under our statute. The, but the other part of the bill, it, it strikes out the part that says um, that an authorized safe haven shall transfer physical custody of the relinquished newborn infant to CPS as early as possible, considering the newborn infant's medical condition as determined to a reasonable degree of medical certainty by a physician. And then it um, you know, it, again, in place, instead of saying CPS shall, you know, as soon as it like it normally does, is places these children into um, pre-approved placements or emergency placements or even pre-approved adoption families, if those are, you know, approved placements as well, then um, it, it says that CPS shall contact an adoption agency and give the babies to the adoption agents. And um, I guess, you know, if, for example, you know, we, we're dealing with one adoption agency right now that's in front of us, but I think what, again, what was brought up in the other bill is that licensing of these adoption agencies is not done on Guam right now. And that uh, so anyone claims to be an adoption agency, you know, we're going to be requiring the hospitals to give the ba- or sorry CPS to give the babies to adoption agencies. And I, again, we're taking CPS out of the determination process as to, instead, why don't, you know, we allow CPS to place these babies in pre-approved adoption families or adoptive, with adoptive, pre-approved adoptive parents, just as the agencies, you know, um, that's the same goal. And so I'm just saying, if they are willing to work with CPS in achieving that goal, then they should work with CPS to achieve that goal. It should be a pre-approved adoptive family as opposed to um, it, just passing the babies off to the adoptive agencies. And, and especially because under these laws CPS continues to um, have physical custody, they're responsible. I think they're going to be financially on uh, on responsible as well, as well as medical needs, everything. And uh, so it, it works complimentary, I would say. And, but instead of passing the babies to an adoptive agency, we should allow CPS to work with these agencies. And if they have found, you know, good placement, good uh, adoptive families, then, then there's no reason CPS can't also put them on their pre-approved adoptive family lists or to work together in that regard and, and so that we don't bypass CPS and that, and that we actually work consistent. And uh, that's really my concern. I just want, if CPS is um, you know, going to do its job and that is, you know, they don't transfer custody within the forty-eight hours. They, well, physical custody they do, but not legal custody. And that is because of all the other concerns that are raised. And so just to allow them to continue to do what they might need to do if they um, anyways, to give them that um, option, but not to mandate that that is what they're going to do. And I think that if these agencies, for example, Ohana, if, if it's Ohana and CPS agrees, Ohana's placements are good, then, then there should be no impediment, even right now. The problem is, yeah, if we open it up to any adoptive agencies, we haven't established any regulations for adoption agencies, then we are pretty much mandating CPS is going to bypass its own uh, procedures to, to, you know, um, vet adoptive parents. And that's, that's what I don't want to see uh, with Bill one oh nine. And, and again, you know, I just want to, you know, I'll thank everyone for their work in this regard. I think we all have the same goals. And so I just think that um, CPS has uh, well, me- maybe Melanie, if you could just speak to, is there any impediment to you doing that, to um, being able to vet families? Well, you, you have to vet adoptive families now. Is there any impediment to you of vetting those adoptive families that uh, any agency, any nonprofit wants to propose to you? And you know, I know we may have had problems in the past, but I want to know now what is the capability of your agency and are, are we able to, to match babies with adoptive families? And do you agree that babies that are um, surrendered under the safe haven should be given to adoptive families within forty-eight hours?
Um, thank you, Speaker. Um, so just, you know, I just want to preface everything again by saying that I really believe that the intent of both bills are noble. It's an, it's a noble cause. We want to do what's right. Um, I understand, you know, we want less government and we do. We really benefit when we collaborate with nonprofits. I agree, you know, but I just feel like, you know, there, there are things that we need to do with the current, you know, adoption agencies. How are they vetted? How do other jurisdictions, how do the states, how do they vet their adoption agencies to be sure that if C- if, if CPS is going to relinquish a child, a newborn infant to an adoption agency, how do we properly identify that these adoption agencies have properly vetted the adoptive homes? It, are they still coming from us? Do we still do the home studies? I mean, there are just those questions that I don't believe the um, Bill one oh eight and one oh nine identify or address. And so those are my concerns. And I, I do believe like um, uh, the author of the bill said, if we had had a roundtable, maybe even prior to having this hearing, we could have vetted a lot of this. I do believe that currently CPS does have the capacity. Again, um, most of the private adoptions are done between families. They hire the attorney. We later get involved because the court says, oh, uh, CPS, you need to do a home study and we do it. And that's, you know, that, that just requires a home study. That is something that we could um, that is something that we could say like, okay, Ohala, this, this would be, you know, the venue for how you can collaborate with us, how you can help us in these, in these instances where these private um, uh, adoptions need home studies. That's something, that's a place where they could help us with. There, there's other, I, you know, areas, but in terms of the Safe Haven Act, I feel like, you know, we have the capacity and we have been doing it. Um, and I do like the um, intention of Bill one oh nine. It enhances that particular act, but it does insert adoption agencies in the language of the stack, of the bill, which I'm a little concerned about. And, and I, as I've said, we do have the capacity to still do it. I appreciate Ohala. I believe that, you know, they're reputable, um, safe haven. They are, you know, good, they'll be good, great community partners. I just need to understand how other states regulate these types of activities.
Thank, thank you. Um, so um, all right. Well, I, I guess I'll leave it there. So CPS, um, well, Ms. Brendan, um, did you, did you assist in writing this bill? Obviously not. I'm gathering from your testimony, not. Okay. All right. Then I'm going to leave it. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And that, those, that's my concern, Bill one oh nine as well.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Uh, and now I'll give it back to the sponsor of both bills, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, uh, to give, or to ask any further questions and to give her closing remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to sincerely thank all the participants in today's public hearing from Ohala, from Department of Public Health and Social Services, DYA, um, Guam Memorial Hospital and uh, and Jen Nauta also from the Safe Haven um, uh, agency. I want to go back to what these two bills do. And basically, we have to remember that Guam gained its first and only nonprofit adoption agency most recently to provide another resource to facilitate the placement of children into a loving home. So Bill one oh eight simply recognizes these types of agencies and inserts them into our policies and procedures into the Guam administrative rules and regulations relative to um, adoption policies. And so the whole intent of Bill one oh eight is to provide for streamlining of the adoption policies, adoption policies and procedures on Guam. And this bill also uh, one oh eight clarifies requirements relative to newborn infant Safe Haven Act and that custody, um, that chain of custody. We all can agree and we've testified throughout this uh, public hearing this morning that expediting the legal adoption on Guam is in the best interest of children in need. And that our rules and regulation should reflect that. So given that the rules and regulations were done at a time when there were no adoption agencies, is, it is only fitting that they now be included in the policies because they are a resource for Guam. Um, with regard to Bill one oh nine dash thirty-six, we, we've now added another layer of um, access to mothers in distress and that is the ability to call nine-one-one and to anonymous, anonymously relinquish their child to um, the responders of the nine-one-one call. And then it also facilitates by uh, adding a chain of custody to include adoption agencies in the placement of children into the homes. I, I do want to just emphasize that there's been a lot of very general discussion about adoption laws on Guam, uh, policies and procedures. You know, the, the the likelihood of abuse. Um, but we are dealing specifically with Bill one oh eight and one oh nine. We are dealing with the insertion and inclusion of an adoption agency or adoption agencies that are that are um, regulated on, that are, that are duly licensed uh, according to the laws of Guam. And so, and, and and what they currently do per the licensing is very specific to adoptions on Guam. And so I, I don't want to, um, I don't want us to get too far off base for what the, the pure intent of the bill is. And that is essentially to update the statute to include an agency in the adoption process that, that previously when the GAR was put in place, twenty-six GAR, um, when this was put in place, these agencies didn't exist. So it's only fitting that they, they now be included in, in the rules and regulations in order to streamline and, and provide for a more robust system. Because after all, no one can, no one can deny that we need a robust child protective system on Guam. The Child Protective Services Act is in place. Um, but we also need, and now we have the opportunity for a robust adoption um, process on Guam, to include private adoption agencies and nonprofit organizations that deal with the um, the placement of children into adoptive homes. And so with that, I just, I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, for um, allowing for a very robust and open type of discussion. And I, I should hope that in the future, um, the very near future, we do have uh, a roundtable discussion to, to talk about the foster care system and some of their issues there, which I, to a great extent are separate and apart from what Bill one oh eight and one oh nine is intending to do. But nonetheless, you know, deals with children and we should also um, continue the discussion where it involves children in the foster care system or, or children that go directly to uh, adoption through the Safe Haven Act. Sisus Massey. And thank you everyone for your um, very thorough and good contributions this morning.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. And thank you to all of my colleagues for joining us this morning as well as uh, to the panel, our partners from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, uh, DYA and CPS, uh, as well as our nonprofit. Uh, thank you to Ohala Adoptions. Thank you to Harvest House. And thank you to Safe Haven for being here and contributing to the discussion. Uh, we really appreciate it. And with that, I'd like to say that the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens is hereby considered Bill number one zero eight dash thirty-six and one zero nine dash thirty-six duly heard. Uh, we will continue to accept testimony on these bills to the committee uh, either via email at officeofsenatorshelton@guamlegislature.org or um, via our Dropbox here at the Guam Congress Building uh, until Tuesday, May third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this virtual hearing is now adjourned and the time is eleven thirty AM. Sisus Massey, everyone. Be safe and take care.